I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As I indicated at the last meeting, we would use Robert's Rules of Order. And in terms of public comment, it would be your opportunity for the public comment on the agenda items. Please state your name and address for the record. Please wait to be recognized by the chair. All comments are to be made to the chair. You are prohibited in order not to violate this rule or to be unruly, making comments from the audience, or even clapping or applauding. You will have three minutes to speak. You are not allowed to direct your address to a member of the board. Again, your statement must be directed to the chair. At the post-meeting comments, you will have three minutes to make any post-meeting comments at the end of the meeting. Again, do not speak until you are recognized by the chair. Again, you are not allowed to make comments or to make or to or about any member. Violation of this rule will not be tolerated and could cause your removal from the meeting. With that, we'll take roll call.
Roll call.
Microphone. Microphone.
Go ahead.
Paul Cassidy?
Here.
Tanya Hogan? Here. Jerry Golka? Is Jerry coming? Does anybody know?
No, he's not.
Okay. John DeBoyer?
Here.
Mark Richard?
Here.
Beverly Rose?
Here.
All right, we'll start with public comments.
Can I make a motion to amend the agenda really quick? I just wanted to add item 1G, and it's just one of our latest bills from PCE. I just wanted to bring us all up to date on the small diameter project. Just a small discussion on it is all, just so we're all on the same page.
Support? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
opposed? Yes.
I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda, 1H, ferry, champions ferry discussion.
What's that, Clark?
Champions Ferry Discussion.
All support?
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
opposed? All right, it's added. Go to public comments on agenda items. Good evening, Mark.
How are you?
Good.
I'm going to make this pretty short. Mark Paletti, Harson's Island. First of all, 1F, the trustee appointment. Last time we had an opportunity to fill the two vacancies on the zoning board. You had 12 good candidates. Obviously, you made a good choice with Beverly. I don't think Margie wants to be on the zoning board because she's already on the zoning board, and then I don't think the previous supervisor wanted to be on the zoning board. But you had nine other candidates that were qualified to be on the zoning board. It's the supervisor's responsibility. So my proposal would be when you interview the people, ask them, would you like to be on the zoning board if you don't make the trustee's job? The zoning board is important because they determine variances, and variances is breaking the rules. You want as many opinions as possible when you're talking about breaking rules. So we should have a full zoning board. In terms of the OHM feasibility study, I've asked this before, I'll ask it again. Was Haida involved in Phase 2 because they weren't involved in Phase 1? And again, I ask his residence because we've been told there's nothing going on. And then also, can you confirm if OHM says there's a port on the mainland? I know a ferry has to have two ports. Michigan law says it has to have two ports. Everyone here knows you have to have two ports in a ferry. But there was only one precinct where a millage was levied against. That's called non-uniform taxation. If you have two ports on a ferry, you have to have two precincts on a ferry millage. That's all. Thank you.
Bruce Schweickert, representing San Suzy. I just want to make sure that when it comes up, I'll be able to come up and speak about the LG Wheel project, rather than just now, or is it just now?
I will call you and recognize you.
John Monti, Project Control Engineering. I too would like to speak regarding the LG Wheel project.
I will call you, John.
Thank you.
Regarding the OHM contract, the U.S. Treasury's rule on using ARPA funds was that they had to be lawfully obligated by the deadline of December 31st. I want to remind this board what Supervisor Cassidy himself admitted publicly, and that is that OHM began their work on his signature alone, waiting for the board to ratify it. If OHM confirms that, it means OHM moved forward on the basis of one person's word, not a board-approved contract. That's a problem under both federal law and ARPA rules. The supervisor acting alone does not obligate ARPA funds. Only a valid board action before that deadline could do that. Here's what that means. If the township keeps paying OHM with ARPA dollars, Treasury could later rule those payments ineligible. And if that happens, ARPA won't cover the bill. The money will have to come straight out of general funds. In other words, taxpayers will be left holding the bag for a contract that was never lawfully approved in the first place. Cassidy claims that they ratified the contract at the March 6 meeting. However, John clearly stated at that March 10 meeting that he had no clue about the December contract. The public and some board members were definitely deceived regarding that vote on March 6. So can you legally ratify something when deception is involved? Regarding OHM invoices, has the board received copies of them and reviewed them? Federal audit standards require more details on invoices. Is OHM aware that this contract was to be paid with ARPA funds? Where does it show the itemized detail of hours and the exact dates of tax performed? I definitely want to see that information, don't you? Shouldn't the invoice distinguish ARPA-funded work versus work from any non-ARPA work? Have the board members received progress reports and received and reviewed them? If you haven't received and reviewed these important documents, then how is it that they've already received over $50,000 in federal ARPA funds, which is public monies? The plain fact remains, unless proven otherwise, the OHM advisor's contract was never authorized by the Clay Township Board and therefore is invalid. The $51,000 payment was improper, and Supervisor Cassidy may be personally liable for authorizing work without board approval. Does the township have an extra $150,000 in its general fund? If ARPA funds can't be used, we have a big problem that needs to be cleared up and soon. Currently, I'm seeking formal clarification from the U.S. Treasury regarding the situation, and I hope that the board is seeking it as well. Before spending another dollar on this project, a written opinion from them would protect the township, provide transparency, and show that this board is acting in good faith. Thank you.
There are no other public comments? Remove the bills payable.
I'll make a motion that we pay the bills payable $40,000, 523,09.
Support? Discussion? Roll call.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Mark Richard?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
We'll move to Supervisor's report. I believe our administration is headed for a problem. I think that Mr. Golka might be able to file a hostile work environment case against the township. His deputy clerk has repeatedly been insubordinate and has been yelling at him. She has reportedly made false statements about him and refuses to do her job. I know Mr. DeBoyer came into his office and started yelling at him one day. I know our clerk got angry with him when he discussed the matter with his deputy. It's clear that the deputy clerk has joined the ranks of the past administration and has tried to impair his ability to do his job. This has to stop before he decides to file a hostile work environment case. I suspect that supporters of the past administration, you know, they lost the election and now want to ruin our government, blame it on us. It's not going to happen. We'll continue to do our work regardless of the lies they spread, and this clerk apparently is right there with him. I have nothing further in my report.
I would just like to comment, I mean, I don't think the truth means, I don't think the truth means much to you, Mr. Supervisor, does it?
You have to be recognized.
No, I don't have to be recognized. No, I don't. I don't have to be recognized. I'm on this board just like you.
You're out of order.
I'm not out of order.
You're out of order. You have to ask to be recognized.
Now, did you ever come to me, did you ever come to me and ask me my side of the story when Jerry and I met in his office?
I'm telling you right now that this is what is reported to me.
I don't, did you ever come and ask me?
No, I never did.
What I report to you?
No.
No, you didn't. You know why? Because you want one side of the story. So just for the record, just for the record, that story's false.
Yeah, okay.
Okay? The yelling started with Mr. Golka, not Mr. DeBoyer. Mr. DeBoyer responded accordingly.
Yep, okay.
The truth doesn't mean nothing to you, does it?
Well, when I'm told that the lawsuit up north was ruled, the arrogance was ruled illegal, and that wasn't true, and you told it to me.
Was there a stay put on it?
That wasn't.
Was there a stay put on it?
Is that, is that the ruling?
Was there a stay put on it?
Is that a ruling?
And do you think it's going to be a rule, Mr. Attorney?
You should spend more time worrying about poop in the water than discussing the, discussing the law.
What does that mean? What does that mean?
That's what you should do.
Tell me what that means.
You figure it out. You're a smart guy.
You know what? You are unbelievably unprofessional.
No, you are. You are unprofessional. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Wait a minute. If, if you have the opportunity to say something about an employee of ours, I think we should also read what the employee sent us.
Well, you know what?
I have no problem.
You can read it. No one's stopping you from reading it.
I need it. You want me to read it?
I would, Bill. Please do.
You can read it to yourself, Bill.
Do you want to hear it?
You want to hear it? I would like to hear it.
We'll have a public hearing.
I would like to hear it.
You're out of order.
You and I are equal on this part.
You are, no, no, you are out of order. Your comments are to be made to the chair.
You are complaining regarding tortures, conduct, and hostile work environment.
Hold that, hold that. I'll make a motion to approve Bev Rose reading the letter that she would like to present to the board.
It's not on the agenda. It's not on the agenda.
Okay, I want to make a motion, I want to make a motion to amend the agenda.
Well, it's a little late for that.
H, I know it's not because you haven't finished the consent agenda.
Bev, go ahead and read the letter.
No, Mr. DeBoyer's not running things.
Neither are you.
Yeah, I am. Yeah, I am. You're out of order if you read the letter. I'm just telling you.
Well, can I make a statement that says in your statement you spoke on me?
You can take it to them and tell them whatever you want. You'll stand outside and read it aloud.
You did. You said whatever you want.
Go on, go ahead. Yeah, I have a right to give a report. You don't.
You took one person's attention.
Right, yeah. Spread some more gossip.
You opened the door.
No, I didn't.
Yes, you did.
We're in court, aren't we?
You opened the door.
No, you're wrong. I gave a report.
Go ahead.
We're not in Russia either, okay?
Let's move to the consent agenda. The reports, board approved. We have a payroll and in-between meetings and department reports, a code enforcement officer. We're going to, we're going to make a motion on the reports? No?
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda. But along with those reports, there's the meeting minutes and the resignation of Amber Nielsen, our building department clerk.
Well, I wish I could deny Amber her wanting to leave because she's an outstanding employee. But we have a motion on the consent agenda. Did we have a second?
I'll support it.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
opposed? Passed. New business, OHM feasibility study, Phase 2. Want to discuss that? Steve Siklich is here. Can you give us a report?
Steve Siklich with OHM. This is Remington Coke. We're both engineers. Yep. Again, my name is Remington Coke. We're with OHM. We're the prime kind of consultant on the feasibility study, that you guys call the OHM feasibility study. We have conducted a lot of transportation feasibility studies in the state of Michigan regarding different modes of transportation. And as part of the study, we engaged kind of two specialized subconsultants. One, Edgewater Resources, well-known for their marine expertise in the engineering field in terms of designing all kinds of marine infrastructure, not just ports, but also harbors, et cetera, marine-related. And then SOMAT Engineering, which is a geotechnical and environmental testing services firm. So just a brief kind of overview, the OHM study is a transportation feasibility study, I should say the continuation of a transportation feasibility study for alternative modes of transportation regarding Harson's Island. So if you guys have any questions regarding that study, Steve and myself will be happy to answer those questions.
Mark, I know you had questions.
Yeah, they have, Mark said something about two ports, the dockages and where it's going to be located at.
The study did, we were provided with two sites to study as part of this evaluation. So yes, it does include two sites.
You know, if those, if those pieces of property have been acquired by Clay Township yet?
We're not privy to that information. We only perform the technical feasibility analysis.
Who is privy to that? Haida?
That would be the owner, yeah, Haida and the township.
So Haida owns the Phase 2 study?
This was a-
Is that what you're saying?
I'm sorry. This was a continuation, yeah. Phase 1 was started with Haida. Due to funding issues, you know, they couldn't complete the study. That's when we were approached by Clay Township to continue it with what's called the Phase 2 study. So there's components of both owner organizations in the study.
So who has a copy of it?
So a draft was provided back on August 1st, at which time we did receive feedback, and that was given back to us for, to complete a final.
And who will get the final copy when it's all said and done?
Everybody sitting at this table here, the entire board.
So Steve, who gave you the feedback on the draft copy?
That was primarily the supervisor.
Supervisor?
Yeah.
And what was the, what was the topics of that feedback?
To be honest, I can't remember exactly what was discussed materially, but it was in general, did we lay out the parameters, you know, going through, it's 1,100 pages. So we didn't spend, you know, hours going through it. It was just at a high level. Did you, you know, did you complete your, your work in accordance with your contract? Yes, we did. Here's where you can find the information that is relevant to it.
Okay, and is it possible to get digital copies of this?
Yeah, absolutely.
Feasibility study?
Yeah. Yeah, we work for the board, so, you know, whatever you, you guys want, we'll give you.
Okay. I'll ask you what's before. I went and had a phone conversation with you, and you said no, so.
So we are under a confidentiality agreement with Haida. There is class, confidential information as part of that.
Yeah, but Steve, this is a township, this is a township feasibility study paid for with township dollars, so I don't think that would apply.
Once, once you get that packet from us, the final, you can do whatever you want with it. You can publish it, you can dissect it, you can ask me questions about it. So once it is your property, you can do with what you choose, but I can't breach my contract and my confidentiality agreement.
So a question on the RFP. So originally, there was an RFP with, with Haida on feasibility study number 1. Was there ever a RFP between Clay Township and OHM for feasibility study number 2?
There was a request for proposal in December. Let's see. December 13th, we received a request from Haida.
From Haida?
Yes.
Not from Clay Township?
Correct. To proceed with a Phase 2 evaluation.
So was there ever one from Clay Township?
Yeah, and on December 19th, we received a request from the township to address that to the township.
And that was an official RFP?
That was an RFP, yeah. I don't know the, the purchasing policies of the township, but that's what hit my desk.
Sure. So then, what, when, I think you and I spoke months back.
Months ago.
You said you began work in January.
Roughly. I don't have an exact date on that, but we could look at timesheets if you need an exact date.
And, and that approval to start in January was given to you by who?
So it was executed by the supervisor in, in December 30th, I believe, '24.
Okay. I have one. You said that confidentiality agreement between who?
Haida and OHM.
And the last contract signed on December 13th didn't spell out Township, Clay Township?
So, because it was a continuation, our assumption is that, that the township assumed the responsibilities of the original contract, which was spelled out in detail.
Was that in the December 19th contract?
It was even spelled out before that, in our response to the RFQ to Haida back in May of 2023, I'm sorry, June of 2023, that was spelled out in detail in a response to our request for qualifications.
Are you finished with, or near finished with Phase 2?
Yeah, we're 95% complete, pending feedback from the board.
So what was the difference between Phase 1 and Phase 2?
Mostly the, the heavy subconsultant work, the marine analysis, the geotechnical analysis, kind of the cost-sensitive items of the project. That's why Phase 2 was a little more expensive.
So you did soil samples and?
Yeah, that's correct.
Steve, was the study done with the assumption that the ports could be anywhere along the North Channel or particular sites on both the mainland and the island?
Our contract was for two specific sites.
Two specific sites?
Yeah, but the information in the study does set the minimum criteria that could be applied to anywhere along that channel.
So I guess, will you, will you not be able to provide an electronic copy of the studies?
Absolutely.
Okay. Can we get multiple copies of that?
Multi-electronic or hard copy?
Electronic.
Yeah, like hard, on a flash drive? Yeah, it's not a problem.
Okay. What's the next step after Phase 2?
For us, that's it.
That's it?
But if you're referring to your, your next steps, so we did lay out recommendations in the study. We would highly recommend a financial feasibility analysis be performed. That's step 1. And then there's, I don't have it in front of me right now, there's, you know, nine others recommendations in that, in that document.
Who does your, who will do the financial feasibility study? At our discretion or?
It's at your discretion. Yeah, that's not part of our scope. We're the engineering firm hired to do the technical evaluation. That would be more on the financial, and then the market analysis will be by, you know, economists or market analysis.
Good.
Anybody have any further questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve. Thank you for coming down. Glad you came down.
I was just curious, Mr. Supervisor, how come the entire board wasn't included in that opportunity for feedback to review the feasibility study?
Well, it was 1,100 pages, and I went through it.
Oh, so we don't know how to read? You read it for us, is that the case? So I'll ask the question again, how come we weren't given the opportunity?
Because it was a rough draft. I read it.
Okay.
And I said, okay, we'd like to have a finished copy.
Okay, but we, we have no input?
But you give a finished copy.
We have no input on feedback?
Sure, you can, you give them feedback once you get the finished copy.
But you can give it before the finished copy. Is that how it works?
You know, John, you want to pick a fight?
No, I don't want to pick a fight.
Yeah, you do.
I don't want to pick a fight.
Yeah, you do.
I'm tired of the Gestapo tactics around here.
Yeah, I'm tired of the anarchy. How's that?
Anarchy?
Yes. We'll go to 1B, DPW, purchase pit covers and meter yokes.
Yes, I'm looking to get some parts so I can do some repairs on two oversized services I have.
I see you have several quotes here.
I do have several quotes, correct.
Good. I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of pit covers and meter yokes for $4,897.97 out of line 591-746.
Support? Roll call.
Mark Richard?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Mark Richard?
Yes.
Go to 1D.
Thank you.
DVM project change order, $2,479.40 invoice CIPP interceptor line is split with IRA, $72,271.53, line item 590-000-80700.
Bill Melgrom from Project Control Engineering. This change order was put together due to some length discrepancies on the, the interceptor lengths. You know, two machines can run that route five times and never match a number. So, and then also along with that, the, the split with IRA, that's what this whole interceptor is about, is they're going to be footing 50% of the bill. They've already approved this change order, which is by your contract with them, that they're, they're presented with these change orders prior to your meeting. Then once you pay the full amount, then you'll invoice them for 50% of that cost.
So, now you're at a distance now.
We're at it.
Did the price per foot change or just the?
No, just, just the, just the lining lengths.
Okay.
We have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve DVM project change order number 2 in the amount of $2,479.40 and to pay the invoice for the CIPP interceptor lining split with IRA in the amount of $72,271.53 out of line item 590-000-807.
I'll support.
Roll call.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Mark Richard?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
All right, we'll go to 1E, discussion Harson's Island Water Treatment Plant. Bruce Schweickert, I know Bruce is here, wanted to speak. I will just tell you that it appears that, that Project Control and Vanish are both working towards some kind of idea of what, what they were charged to do the work. Vanish wants to come two weeks from now and give us a price. I informed Mr. Monti of this week, well, before, and I've asked him to try to do the same. It's my feeling that we've got to, we've got to finish this. It's got to stop, it's got to end, and Mr. Schweickert, do you want to speak first?
Actually, if you don't mind, I'll go first, I'll leave John.
Okay, John, you want to speak first? Roll call.
Tanya Hogan? Yes. Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Mark Richard?
Yes.
Go to 1D. DVM project change order, $2,479.40 invoice CIPP interceptor line is split with IRA 72,271.53, line item 5900080700.
Bill Melgin from Project Control Engineering. This change order was put together due to some length discrepancies on the interceptor lengths. You know, two machines can run that route five times and never match a number. So, and then also along with that, the, the split with IRA, that's what this whole interceptor is about is they're going to be footing 50% of the bill. They've already approved this change order, which is by your contract with them, that they're, they're presented with these change orders prior to your meeting. Then once you pay the full amount, then you'll invoice them for 50% of that cost.
So. Now you're at a distance now.
We're at it.
Did the price per foot change or just the?
No, just, just, just the lining lengths.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve DVM project change order number two in the amount of $2,479.40 and to pay the invoice for the CIPP interceptor lining split with IRA in the amount of $72,271.53 out of line item 590000807.
I'll support.
Roll call.
Paul Cassidy?
Yes.
Beverly Rose?
Yes.
John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Mark Richard?
Yes.
Tanya Hogan?
Yes.
All right, we'll go to 1E, discussion Harson's Island Water Treatment Plant. Bruce Schweickert, I know Bruce is here, wanted to speak. I will just tell you that it appears that, that Project Control and Benish are both working towards some kind of idea of what, what they were charged to do the work. Benish wants to come two weeks from now and give us a price. I informed Mr. Monti of this week, well, before, and I've asked him to try to do the same. It's my feeling that we've got to, we've got to finish this. It's got to stop, it's got to end. And Mr. Schweickert, do you want to speak first? Okay, John, you want to speak first?
Certainly so. John Monti, Project Control Engineering, 2420 Point Trumbull Road. The, what we saw in the packet was a sole source justification that was presented by Benish. So I just wanted to give you our opinion on that. I'm not sure what you guys are going to discuss about that. It hasn't been mentioned yet. But in our opinion, algae wheel plants have been constructed in many states and in other countries. Benish and DVM did not build them all. They did not design them all. There's many qualified firms to design and build these projects. So we being one of them to do the design on the plant. The other item here is, that was mentioned is that Benish has a, is meeting a zero wetland mitigation plan. We have had these same discussions with our wetland consultant actually several months ago. So there's nothing that is special about what they're doing in long that regard either. Then the last thing that I would suggest is that your MEDC grant, that you look at the procurement requirements in that grant and validate how that you can receive prices on that. And it's our understanding that you need formal advertising and sealed construction minutes.
Is Larry Scott here? Would you, Mr. Scott, could you come up and speak to that?
Good evening, Mr. Supervisor, members of the board. I'm Larry Scott.
Okay.
I am an attorney at the law firm of O'Reilly Ransilia. I have known the Schweikerts for a long time. I was involved in the sale of the San Souci to the Schweikerts, my law firm having been involved in the ownership of it. I have had conversations with Christine Anderson, your township attorney, about this subject a couple of times today and going back a couple of weeks on the different proposals. What I'm here for is to simply ask you, I've provided materials to Christine from Benish and from others and some legal authority with regard to whether or not the township can award us what we'll call a single source contract. And what I've asked, what I'm here tonight for is to request that you all authorize Christine as the township attorney to review the materials that, not only the materials that I've given her, but the materials she'll find on her own, doing her own research, such that come September 22nd, at your next meeting, she can be qualified to provide you with her opinion, not mine, hers, on behalf of the township as to whether or not the township is authorized to enter into, again, what I'll refer to as a single source contract. I haven't had the opportunity to go back and look at the grant that Mr. Monti referred to, and I'll be happy to do that, and I'm sure Christine will do the same. But the question from our perspective is, and I, for some reason, I'm a little confused because I was told earlier that Mr. Monti, and I have all the respect in the world with Mr. Monti, I've dealt with him on a number of occasions, I was told that he wasn't working on this project anymore, that in fact, he, the township and he had agreed that he wasn't working on this project. So I'm a little surprised tonight to hear that there's some sort of competing suggestions or proposals, if you will. But anyway, my, my quest, request for you all tonight, simply allow your township attorney to get up to speed, give her opinion so that when you come back here on, in two weeks, you're able to make an intelligent and a qualified decision as to how best to proceed. As Mr. Cassidy has suggested, this has had a long and a painful history. And it's, we're hopeful that we can move this on and get it done before the end of the year. There's some other things that are time sensitive and that would expire if we don't get it done soon. So I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you may have, but that's why I'm here.
Mr. Supervisor, did Addis Law Firm review any of this prior? Paul?
I'm not aware of it.
Okay, okay.
I don't know.
I just didn't want us to pay for like double the work if something was already done by the other law firm that we previously had. But I can reach out to Christine and have her review everything before we move forward.
So my question would be, what is the purpose of sole source justification and how is that beneficial to the township?
If there's, first of all, I mean, the sole source means there isn't anybody else that can do it. And we heard from Mr. Monti, he thinks that there's competing projects here and that other people can do it. That may or may not be the case. That's up to you guys to decide. But if Benish comes in here and says, we're giving you this proposal, it's within your budget, we can make it work, and we're the only ones around that can make it work, you can't, you have no choice. I mean, if you want to proceed with the project at that point, and the question is, and I believe there is legal authority for the township to say, in certain circumstances where it's a one of a kind, it's a one-off, only people in the world that can do this, then you have the legal authority without setting it out for RFPs and everything else, you have the authority to contract with that and go forward. Anybody else? Free shot?
Well, I guess I have a question.
No such thing as free with a lawyer here, right?
How can we go into an agreement like that when Mr. Monti has been working for us and preparing something like, and now you're saying that only Benish, now we're going to say that only Benish can do it?
I, I just told you, I'm surprised at John's comments that there are, that more, that there's more than one proposal. I had been told and I, what I read in the township minutes and things, for that Mr. Monti had, was no longer working on this project.
Well, look, the fact that in front of you, that he dropped out on the 7th of July as far as algae wheel, not being involved with it anymore.
Well, part of it was, so it's understood, is the, the project ballooned at $6 million. And at that point, I asked Mr. Monti not to work on it anymore. Subsequent to that, it downsized again. And I was familiar with, I think Mr. Monti can recall that I, I think I told him, go ahead and get some prices in there. Is that correct, John?
I was aware that the 6 million, I was aware that that number won't work. I was aware that Benish said a million eight or something to that extent. And then I was told that Mr. Monti was, had agreed or was told, don't work on it anymore. So.
Oh, I think the timeline's a little confused. I think he was told way previous to the downsizing.
May I?
Right.
Not to work. But John was brought back into it, what, May? And after that, it was July 7th that he sent it to algae wheel that he'd no longer be in contact with them.
I mean, part of your consideration, next or two weeks, is going to be, A, as they're two different projects, are they both the same thing? And B, if not, and Benish is the only one that can do it, do you have the authority to give it to Benish on a single source? But I don't want to be here in two weeks and then have you say, okay, now let's send it to the township attorney. We're just wasting two more weeks. I'd rather get it to Christine now. So when she, before your next meeting, you have all the information you need. That's why I'm.
Well, excuse me.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So just keep in mind, there's three components to this. There's engineering, there's build, and there's the supplier. So, and I've always said all along, it should be designed and put out for open bid. The supplier may be exclusive. I, I wouldn't argue with you on that. But when it comes to design or building contractor, I don't see where there's exclusive ability to do those two things.
And you may be right.
Yeah.
But.
So I'm just curious where that, I'm just curious where that argument comes from.
If you come to the conclusion that it is the only way, you're going to want some authority to say, I can go ahead and do this.
I guess I would just say, what initiated this? Where did this come from, this sole source justification?
Benish is the one that said they could do it with a million eight, which was in the budget, as I'm told.
Understood.
Okay. They're the ones that have come to us and said, we can do it, we can get it done within the budget, and we're the ones that do this. We're the only ones that do this. So the question that was then raised was, if that's the case, can we get it done as a sole source contractor? Are we going to go out for RFPs? That's all part of your consideration.
Absolutely.
I have a question. How can Benish say that they can do it for 1.8 when they haven't even given us a, any documents to prove that?
It's in prime view right now.
We've given everybody on the board copies of.
So why has it taken two weeks to get it up here then? Or three weeks or six weeks for Benish to get up here? If they can do it for 1.8, why do I have to walk through the door right now and say, okay, here it is?
They want to come in on the 22nd and sign the contract with you.
That's, if I would have thought you were prepared to do that tonight.
Over that?
Exactly. That's why I'm saying, can we get the things in motion so you are prepared in two weeks to be able to look at and make that decision? They'll be here in two weeks if you say that you're, you're going to consider it, and they'll sign the contract then.
So, Mr. Supervisor?
I'll try to get it all to you, Mr. DeBoyer.
I would greatly appreciate that.
I'll get it all to you.
I would just ask you, because you've been the man on, on point on this, because I'm thoroughly confused, to be honest with you. Where are we at? We, give us the timeline that brings us to the, the end that he's talking about in two weeks.
That's right.
Tell us, tell us the timeline, because I'm confused, because I know we, we started, stopped, then we talked to Benish, then you went back and talked to John.
Yep. And I'm, you know what? I'm trying to give them both an equal opportunity.
Okay.
To do the work.
Okay.
That's what I'm trying to do. So I told, Benish just said, we can come in in two weeks and give you our contract. I've explained to Mr. Monti, if he can do that, would he do it as well?
Okay, so let me ask you this. When Benish says our contract, that is the design of the contractor building the, the collection system and the plant?
That's true. And, and also I've asked for a start date and a completion date.
Okay.
For both of them. So that's where we're at.
So, so what is our deadline right now? When do we expect this from our, just the two, the two is who we're asking it from?
So that's all we've talked, that's the only ones I've talked to. Benish came in. I know the fellow at Benish.
Anthony?
Anthony had worked on it when he worked for Mr. Monti. They had a, a split there, unfortunate split. And he went with this other company and Mr. Monti has stayed on it. And I'm, I'm just looking to, to try to, try to get some conclusion to.
I agree 100%.
And so I'm saying, look, if Benish could come in and give us what we want, or Mr. Monti could come in, give us what we want, we can decide what we want to do.
So are we giving them a timeline to do this?
I told everybody, Benish wants to come in in two weeks, and I told Mr. Monti, I'd like him to come in in two weeks. But obviously, like to get some information upfront if we could.
And I'm not here selling Benish. Whatever project, whatever people you chap choose, as long as the project moves forward, that's all I want. But I want you to get the materials and study it, have an opportunity to look at it and study it between now and September 22nd. That's all.
John, is two weeks a fair request for you to accumulate what you need?
Well, I was just asked to do that this, this past week, towards the end of the week. So I'm not sure I can make it happen in two weeks. It's a short period of time.
How long would you need, John? How long do you think you'd need, John?
You have to ask the contractor that. It might be, I mean, they've just spent eight weeks doing it, right? So.
Yeah, but.
Maybe four.
Four weeks?
Can I?
I'm just looking for an analogy.
I agree with that.
I'm not looking to.
I agree with that.
Ex John out or anything like that.
And I've said this before, I'd almost prefer to work with John, but it's been two weeks, two weeks, two weeks since February, since the 6.7 million. You guys signed a thing with Benish, whatever you want to call that, to give them, it turned out, they asked for six weeks, then being eight, by the time township signed the agreement, there's a couple of weeks, so it's eight weeks out. In eight weeks, they're willing to sign the contract to do it. DVM would be the contractor, they'll be the engineering firm, and LG will be the supplier.
Well, Bruce, in all fairness, they're willing to sign the contract with sole source justification, which basically takes the open bidding process away from the township.
Correct. But what they'll do is, for the 1.8 million, and guarantee a completed project at Eagle. And something, just to point out what, what John said about Eagle, the next day after you had the meeting here, I was physically present for the meeting with the Deputy Director of Eagle and the Division Director of Eagle. They had a meeting, and they do have a way out with no mitigation. That's, that was the director giving us a way out with that. So.
So, so would that be exclusive to?
Well, what it is, is kind of how it is, is right now, I don't know how to say this, but with Benish, they don't, they've signed an agreement with LG Wheel that they can't, LG Wheel can't give their technology to anyone else because they've designed the plant, not LG Wheel. LG Wheel only supplies the parts. Again, they have, they don't want to do all the labor and then hand it to somebody else for them to take advantage of it. And I guess I understand that.
So you're saying the mitigation waiver would be based on their technology?
Yes, yes.
I want to add to that.
No, not LG Wheels. Benish has technology with LG Wheel because LG Wheel, if you call them, won't tell you what's going on either, because they've signed an agreement with Benish on this project not to divulge how they're doing it.
I believe Senator Hertel is going to get a waiver.
And, and to also add to that, there was never a grant on this project. It's not required. It was a line item, and I was talking, a long conversation with Senator Hertel today, and he just says, please get this done. This has gotten ridiculous, because this is years now. This isn't a week or a month or, it's years.
It was going to be built last October. They were going to be running it.
October of last year.
November, I'm sorry.
Yeah, actually, you're right, November. And in November last year. And I don't want to, I know I'm not supposed to address the crowd, but I've been in, was in continuous conversations with Mr. Monti, and it kept being two weeks, two weeks, two weeks. Now we're talking even longer now. And he's the one who threw out the name, because the only one I've ever had contact with is DVM, and they've never been asked to bid it, except by Benish. And they've been, let's put it this way, in eight weeks, they've been all over the island, they've been all over the businesses. We see them continuously, talk to them continuously, and we're farther along in eight weeks than we've got in three years.
Okay, Bruce, so to address the, the mitigation on the wetland, this is right in, in the email from Anthony to you.
And one thing, I.
Let him finish.
Okay.
That you provided for us. Says that the single source purchase determination is based on the unique qualifications of the engineering firm, Benish, to meet zero wetland mitigation criteria. So I would say that that, that's saying that they do have some you.
Technology.
Exclusive technology that they're going to get zero mitigation.
Right.
Yes. And that was beyond my.
That wouldn't apply to anybody else.
That was beyond my education level when we're talking, because there were seven people in that meeting, and it was beyond my education level, but that is what they agreed to.
So they weren't specific with you?
Well, they were, I was in the meeting, but I'm not exactly sure what they're talking about.
You all can consider.
Would you like Benish to be here in two weeks and have Mr. Monti as well, or do you want to set it for a month from now?
I, my, my question would be, I mean, is it our, is it the board's intent to move forward with this sole source justification?
If you pick Benish.
If Christine Anderson says, fine.
And you choose Benish. You may look at both proposals and say, I'm not going.
I mean, because in my opinion, if we do go with sole source justification, that takes our option all out for, for the open bidding process. It eliminates it.
Yes.
That's true.
And I don't know why we would want to do that.
Because nobody else got the technology.
Well, that's what's, that's, that's what's being said.
That's what they're telling you.
That's what we need.
The fact, John, that we're in it for three years now, and we're no farther, we're actually farther behind than we were three years ago, going about the way we are.
Yeah.
And, I mean.
So to address that though, Bruce, I talked to Anthony about that too. They wouldn't even have a product ready to go until well into 2026.
Correct. They said if you'd sign the contract next week with them.
Two weeks.
Or two weeks, that they would honor it, but understand, they would not even, the plant would be basically delivered in eight months, and they're looking at end of 26th for a completed project. They would allow DVM to keep working on it before the plant was physically there. And when the plant arrives, because the plant will be modular and put in so it can be added to later and all that.
Yeah.
That's how it plays out. It's just, but it would be, but you have to give them a go ahead.
My point is, it's not going to happen tomorrow regardless, right?
Right. The longer it keeps going down.
No, I agree with you 100%. Needs to be done.
And as they keep putting it, the prices keep going up. And something. And something I warned the board about, but I looked at your bills payable last month, and on LG Wheel, there was another 75,000 or 74,000 from PCE towards LG Wheel. That is not an endless fund for it to keep, because we keep doing that, there'd be no money to have anybody build it. And that was just on 25th of last month that that bill came in for the LG Wheel.
What was that bill for, John? Do you know?
Design services over the past few months.
And that may be for the 6 million. I have no idea, but it may be for the $6 million project. I have no idea.
No, I think that's the downsized plan.
And I'll even go this far, that I could have LG Wheel saying, basically what John's bidding can't be done for that price, because he's not bidding the same-
You don't know. Let him-
Well, they'll want to say that at this point.
You don't know that.
LG Wheel is willing to say that.
Yeah. Let them see the proposals and let them decide. But if you go with Benish, they're telling you that it's sole, single-source. And then you need to have the opinion from Christine to say whether or not it's permissible for you to do that, which is how I started here.
So let's just walk through the scenario. Let's just say we approve the sole-source justification, and we go, "Okay, Benish, build this thing. You're telling us you can do it for 1.8." And they get all done two years from now, and it's 2.5. What's our recourse?
Breach a contract. If you're going 1.8, it's by contract.
That's all you're paying.
With a start and a finish.
And we go to court with them, right?
Well, that's where we go.
We go to court with them.
Huh?
We go to court with them, right?
Well, that's where we go. Yep.
We're in an open-bid process. That's a little bit different.
Same thing.
Well, no, anybody can breach a contract, whether it's open-bid or not.
A low bidder could come back and give you change orders for another half a million, too.
Yeah, but we don't have to approve.
We're getting change orders right now.
We don't have to approve Benish.
But we don't have to approve those if we choose not to.
Yeah.
And the same applies to Benish, though. They tried to increase the price, you don't have to improve, or you got a contract.
And I think they highlight the paragraph there, that they will do it, sign the contract, and it's like any job I've ever seen, if they don't produce it, one is port or bonding will cover it.
Usually, you get a performance bond.
But they're huge.
They get a performance bond.
But I kind of would like from the board, myself, an answer on that, so whether I tell Benish, LG Wheel, and all that to show up, because they come from out of state. And one of the things, I do want to make a point, the person that you guys keep talking about, Anthony, I know him, he comes here because you guys know him, and that's why he's the, but Dan, he was here at the one meeting, and him, he's the lead guy on this. They just keep bringing Anthony here because you guys supposedly know Anthony, and I don't know Anthony, so-
Dan's from LG Wheel.
No, Dan is from Benish. He's the one who runs the Michigan division.
Oh.
But they keep bringing Anthony here because he knows you. He was, he's been, the guy who runs it's been sitting in the audience, like the one day, the guy from DVM was here, he was here, and somebody else who I understand used to work for PCE was here that, you know, when they made the big presentation.
Is it possible to get the areas or the locations where Benish has installed the LG Wheels at recently, so we can maybe give them a call and see what's happening?
The one I gave you, the one-
Let him finish.
Oh, okay. Well, I was just going to say, the one is a picture of one they're installing right now. That is not the one they're putting on the island, but that is one they're installing currently. It's not finished.
Well, I'd like to have several, so we can give them a call and see how, what their recommendation is and how the install works.
I missed the first word there, Mark. Excuse me.
So I'd like to give them a call-
A call, okay.
-to find out how the install worked, and if they came to, and if they actually completed it with build, with money.
I would think that would be very prudent to do, yes.
We can provide, if it's not in there, we'll get you the contact information.
Actually, that's one I never thought of, but I would never hire somebody without going to six or seven people.
Check the references.
Yeah.
So it says, "Design and construction of both the wastewater treatment plant and collection system with the remaining 1.8 million funds."
Correct.
So that means that the work's already been done, and some of it, obviously. How much money do we have to work with to begin with?
2 million.
2 million.
And right now, that's why I was warning at the different times I've been in front of the board here, that every time another bill comes in, now it's 1.63 left to work with, or 1.73.
Well, I think, you know, what do you do? Supervisor's given both engineering firms the okay to go ahead and continue with design. I mean, they can't work for free, right?
Oh, I'm not bitching, I'm just saying, I'm warning-
Benish has given you the proposal for free.
Oh, $20,000.
Well, that's, that's not 70,000.
Wow.
And it's 300 over the period of the last three years.
Yeah.
To get what we haven't got-
Yeah, that's not accurate either, Bruce, because keep in mind, part of that 300 was a deposit on parts with LG Wheel.
No, no, that's separate, because it's over 300 still sitting with LG Wheel. And they will use it-
They give us credit, right.
Yes. I'm talking about the engineering and all that, but LG Wheel, we have spent, I'm going to just shoot from the top, at 600,000, but I think it's in the paperwork there that I left you, that there's over 300,000 that LG Wheel will put towards anything, as long as it maintains. And that's the only thing that line item has to be, is LG Wheel. It has to be sourced through LG Wheel. Because when I originally started this, they weren't even, I already came up with LG Wheel. I just wanted to put a containerized subdude processing plant-
But you still can.
I can't without you. That's where you guys came in, for Part 41. It has to be a government agency. That's how you guys-
You still can, you just can't use the grant money.
Correct.
Right?
Correct. Correct.
Anybody got an extra?
And I did try to do that, by the way. It wasn't that expensive.
No.
Not anything like what we've been talking now, but what happened there was, the company that came in is like LG Wheel, they have no previous plants in the state of Michigan. They worked on it for about four months for me, and then backed out, because they said to get one through Eagle was just too hard to do. They're, they allow them to put these packaged plants in 11 states on the Great Lakes, but not Michigan. And that's the one I wanted to go with, but LG Wheel has something called carbon credits, and when I already came up with that, that seemed to be a real catchword.
I understand.
And also, for some reason, Benish wants, and LG Wheel, both really want to get a plant in Michigan. They just making this their test project, I guess you'd call it.
Lost leader.
Speaking of carbon credits, I was wondering how many, I understand that the carbon credits aren't going to be as fruitful as we thought at one point in time.
To tell you the truth, Mark, I have no idea what they are.
Makes two of us.
They're still available.
All that, yeah, all I know is that the government people seem to glow when you say it to Eagle people that, you know, it generates carbon credits.
So where we're at here is, we've authorized Benish to spend $20,000 of our money to come up with a plan. Mr. Monti has been spending right along. Question is, should Mr. Monti decide to bid this with his money at this point rather than ours? Right? Because all's fair between the two, if they want the project, they should bid it on their own.
I would agree with that to an extent, but keep in mind that PCE was our, or is our township engineer.
Hey, listen.
And that's where it all started.
I've worked with John for 30 years. I like-
I know, but I'm just saying, that's where, that's where it started.
Yeah. So at this point, what are we going to do?
Well, I think I need, like, I'm not ready to make a decision on the sole-source justification until I talked, Christine Anderson reviews everything, because I don't want to get us in a legal situation. If PCE comes back and says that they can produce, somebody else can produce those things, and then we signed this contract with a sole-source justification, and then they have proof that somebody else can do it, I would like Christine to review everything before I make a decision.
And that's why I asked for the timeline, because I thought that's where we were going, is we were going to say, "Okay, Benish, you bring it back, PCE, you bring it back, and then we make a decision."
That's what I think.
That's what I thought you directed those guys to do.
I did.
So why would we change at this point to go any other route?
As Mr. Scott indicated, we can rely upon Christine Anderson and-
Yeah, but I feel like the tail's wagging the dog. I mean, it's our call to make, isn't it? If that's what we want to do.
Well, people want legal opinions at times, and she can tell us whether that's prudent or not.
What I'm asking is, is the, why would the board say, "Yes, if we, if we know that we have multiple firms that can do the job, why would we not want the open bid processed?"
But then if we do that, do we allow Mr. Monti to keep working on our money, or do we say, "Mr. Monti, you got to make a decision whether you want to, you know-"
That's a valid question.
But we can do that.
I would just keep going back to the fact that we've been at this for three years, and this is adding to it again. If you've got somebody who's willing to come in in eight weeks from the time they started with only 20 grand, sign the contract, write it up, make it good for yourselves, where it can't go over the 1.8 million, run with it. That's my opinion.
If you do it the way you're suggesting, Mr. DeBoyer-
Do that by the next meeting.
You do it the way you're suggesting, then we got to have a bid package. We got to have some standards for some of the bid.
Agreed.
So who's going to draw that up?
Now, that's the problem we're in now, because we put our township engineer in a tough spot.
Well, that's, I know, it's the problem.
John, you got anything?
Yeah, I do.
Good.
I'm somewhat tired of hearing about the two weeks, the two weeks, the two weeks. You guys got to remember that this project started with a total different plan involved, which was much larger, much larger service district that we were given, that we were targeting. So it was totally different. So all that time that was spent designing that, all the time that was spent on wetlands and what we were going to do in getting the permits, the MPDES permit, and the permit to work in the wetland, to fill the wetland, to fill the floodplain, all of that stuff was part of this. And then, when you had no hopes of getting the additional grant funding, we had to start over again with a completely different plan, which is what Benish is trying to do as well, right? Is come in with a completely different plan.
So let me clarify that additional grant funding. We were hoping, or there was discussion, that we were going to get an additional 2.5 million from McLean's office, correct?
Correct.
And then that collapsed.
That's our understanding, it collapsed, right.
So then, we had to go to a Plan B at that point, right?
That's correct.
And that's when we started to talk about the downsized?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure I had it clear.
So, and as Mr. Cassidy said, initially, he stopped me, said, "We can't do anything." Then it was, "Well, what are we going to do with the money that you've already received? We need to proceed with a smaller plant, something that we could fit in, and downsize the service district, and to come up with a new plan." So we had to start over with that, and that's where we headed and what we did. So our job that we were given to do was to do this as we typically do them, is do the design, and then it go out for competitive bids. When Benish got involved, they've offered a different alternative to this, which is different from what we were assigned to do originally. So now we were just asked to, and I asked this question actually a long time ago, "Am I supposed to come up with a contractor and present a proposal on this?" And initially, I was told, "Yes, maybe you should do that," and then I was told, "No, don't do that. You're supposed to be doing this with the design," and it's sent out for the competitive bids.
And who told you that?
Supervisor.
Okay.
So, which was what our contract was. I mean, that's what our original agreement was, to do that. So that's what we were proceeding with and continuing to do. So then it was this last week, where I was just asked, "Hey, can you, you know, can you get a contractor? Maybe you should do this now. Can you get a contractor, so you're not pushed out of this thing? Can you get a contractor and do this?" So to this date, I have not been working with a contractor. I didn't go to DVM, and we've worked with DVM on multiple contracts. They're doing work for us right now here in Clay Township. We've worked with them in East China, in other areas. So we have a great working relationship, they're a good contractor, but we were, we did not solicit contractors to do a design-build project. That was not what our original task was. So, so all of this here about, all of a sudden now, if I need to get a contractor involved, how much time do I have to get them? I'm going to hear, "Two weeks, two weeks, two weeks," which, to me, kind of pisses me off.
That's why I asked you, John, how much time can you, how soon can you do it?
I'm assuming, right now, that's why I said earlier, maybe four weeks, I could get somebody involved in that period of time. A contractor has to start from scratch, right? And put everything together.
Well, you can use DVM as well, can't you?
Well, they probably have an agreement with Benish.
That's my understanding.
So-
And typically won't do it.
You have to go to Piper's Act or something like that.
If it went to the design-build, DVM would have been able to bid on it. Anybody would have been able to, or on, with us designing it and sending it out for bids. But this way, I would need to select a contractor and ask him to sign an agreement with me and to come up with a proposal to do this.
Do you believe that it could be done for 1.8 million if you got the deal?
It's possible. That got to depend on a contractor to confirm prices. Remember, we're, we just do the design side, they have to guarantee the price, technically. They're the builders of it. They bond it.
So I asked the question way back when, when this whole conversation started, why, why are we even going to the design bill or the combined process between contractor and engineer? Typically, it's designed by the engineer and it's put out for bid. Why did we even go down this road?
Because Benish felt they could do it for 1.8, and I never had any indication from John that he knew what it would cost, and that's why.
One of the things I will add to this, if you wanted them here, but LG Wheel said they're not bidding the same equipment for John as they are for Benish. And it's much less expensive the way Benish, because they've engineered it, not LG Wheel. They're just using the LG Wheel parts. And LG Wheel would be perfectly willing to come in and say that.
Well, at this point in time, I think we have to decide-
What is LG Wheel's part of it with you?
I think at this time, we have to decide, how do we want to handle this? Do we want to have John finish his engineering, come in with a bid? Do we wanna have John finish his engineering, come in with a bid? Do we want Benesch to bid? Do you wanna have John draw it up and put it out for public bid? How do we wanna go from here? I just have this feeling that John's idea of how to go with it and Benesch are two different things. I don't think they're gonna come up with the same idea and the same idea of how to do things and what to build.
And that I have a unique, cause I've talked to LG Wheel on a regular basis, they are not bidding the same project. They're bidding the same outcome.
I mean, I, maybe I don't know what I don't know, but I just assume that LG Wheel provides the product, it's pipe in, pipe out.
What, to an extent, it's not.
Not totally, no.
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 Unique to your designs? Is it unique to your designs, John?
No, not really. LG Wheel has done other plants similar. I mean, when we went back to them for the downscaled version, we asked them, what is the smallest plant you've ever constructed? Give us something that is similar to that, that you can provide validation to Eagle with. Because being the fact that they have, did not, have not constructed a plant in Michigan, they had to validate with Eagle that they can meet the discharge requirements. So I felt one of the simplest ways to do that was to take a plant that was a small-scale plant that they've built in the past, that they could provide testing information from, to show that these are our tests that we've done on this plant that's in operation, and validate that it meets the treatment requirements. Each of us may have our own way of how are we assembling the components. That can very well be, there's no question about it.
One of the things, when I talked to you, John, back, I think in April, that I had mentioned, I went back to LG Wheel and said, can we get a container plant? They said, absolutely, we make them all over the country. And John wasn't aware of it, and I think that's about the time Benesch came in, somebody at LG Wheel, anyway, Benesch came into it at that point. We have a ton of different ways of doing it. Cause I keep wanting to go back to just simple, put a damn container there, and it's done.
Well, I think the initial thought was, you know, there's a lot of those side streets past downtown that need help, septic field issues.
Well, yeah.
But then, but then obviously, the cost wouldn't allow that, so then we, it got confined to the downtown district, so.
Only because I'm so, and John will, cause we were involved very much at this point. Yes, those streets do need help, but now, they're all 100%. Now we've got multiple people fighting this crossing our property.
Oh, okay.
So that's very odd, that three years down the road, they decide that...
Well, the high water's one way. So both systems are expandable, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, it's my feeling that we should see if John can come back in 30 days, and Benesch come in in 30 days. Get your opinion from, from Chris Anderson, by, before next meeting, we can discuss it at the next meeting, and if we can, we can get off first base at the 30-day mark. That, that's my idea.
I think so. Make, make that a motion.
All right, I move that we get ahold of Christine Anderson, get a legal opinion from Christine in two weeks, and we read it, we decide what we can do, and we, we let both Mr. Monty and Benesch know two weeks from now, our decision on which way to go.
So I'm confused.
So am I in that one.
Yeah, are we pursuing the sole source justification? Or are we gonna ask PCE and Benesch to come back with a people bid?
My feeling is, go with the sole source opinion, legal opinion, and we make the decision two weeks from now, which way to go.
You said 30 days earlier, I thought.
So the sole source could be either...
You want them both to come back with a proposal in 30 days or in two weeks?
Thirty days.
Well, the sole source can be applied to PCE and Benesch.
No.
Yeah.
So it just...
No, if we, if this board, if this board authorizes sole source justification, it says Benesch has exclusive rights to build it, without, without a bid process.
Well, make that decision in 30 days, we get our legal opinion in two weeks.
That's what this document says, John. If you get a different document for PCE.
I'm gonna need you to re-heat that motion.
Well, I need clarification, either we're going sole source or going for two bids.
I'm gonna need you to repeat the motion to make it clear.
One of the things you're doing here, though, is in a month, unless I'm missing the point here, is, one is there'll be more bills, of course, from PCE, because they'll be working on it. Two is, when we get there, he's gonna put a bid proposal together, and then we'll be back to, are you gonna sole source or do the bid proposal? Because now you have to put it out for bids, and then it's gonna back it way up. I mean, you're gonna be right back where we're standing here in another month, doing it that way.
Bruce, I don't know that we could do it any other way.
I, my understanding is that Benesch and Mr. Monty will each come with their proposal in 30 days. You'll make that decision then, but within the first two weeks, you're gonna get your legal opinion, so that if you do go with Benesch, can you single-source it? And get whatever other information you may have.
Well, if we're gonna go with the bid process, and Benesch comes in as the low bid, then sole source is...
They won't be bidding the same thing, though.
What's that?
They won't be bidding the same thing.
No, they're bidding...
They, cause they cannot bid what John has put together.
How do you know? How do you know that?
Cause they know what both, because LG Wheel has told me what they're both working on.
I think they're both two different designs.
They are, completely.
The question that you just presented was, can I get a contractor and come back and submit a proposal similar to the other companies? It would not be a proposal that I come back with and say, we're gonna send it out for bids. It would have to be a lump sum proposal, similar to what they're offering.
I agree.
Otherwise, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't make any...
Different design, but lump sum either way.
Yeah, I agree, John. Well, we don't know that it would be different, it could be.
Well, we know that, we think that he can't copy the LG Wheel.
I would disregard this here. I would disregard this, this sole source justification right now.
Yeah, if we're gonna, if we're gonna say, get a contractor and bid it, then let's do that.
Yeah, we don't need this.
Okay, well then, we'll, we'll do it in 30 days, we'll, but we have to have standards. How are we gonna do standards? Both jobs are different.
I'm sorry, I didn't...
Both designs are different, how, what's...
Do we know that, though?
You can call LG Wheel, that's, they'll talk to you on that, just ask them if the designs are different or completely different.
Maybe we should get the answer to sole source from Christine anyway.
But one of the things I really want, John, especially to you, how you're presenting it, is, in a month, if John comes back and says, okay, my contractor says he can do it for 1.6, finish the project, it'll still be sole source, he's not gonna put it out for bids. And I...
No, but we have, they have two...
That's what he's saying, too.
The question is, they'll have two sources.
No, no, but we're taking, the township board then is looking at two different bids. That's what I'm saying. Sole source justification, that doesn't happen. You, you award the contractor, boom, done. Am I, am I wrong?
No, I, you're gonna have two different proposals, just so you don't have to worry about sole source, you're gonna pick one proposal or the other.
Agreed.
But then we have to have standards on this proposal. What, what is gonna be the standards of our bid, and who's gonna set those standards?
Well...
I don't think John can.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Apparently, there is standards, cause here's Benesch's bid.
Yeah, use those and hand one to John.
Well, we can do that.
Yeah.
That's pretty easy, cause that doesn't have any of the technology.
I mean, how can they bid it without standards? Or with standards? Apparently, they had something, right? And I guess, I would only say, is 30 days long enough for you to get things together? It's gotta be. Go ahead.
I gotta solicit a contractor.
Yeah. We need a contractor. All right.
While you're all thinking about it, I just wanna make the record clear, I was not at all critical of Mr. Monty, and his two weeks, two weeks, that was not it. And you, really, all I care about is either two weeks or four weeks from now, we pick a con, we pick a proposal, we go forward, and we get this project down the road. That's all. I mean, I'm not here to sell Benesch or Mr. Monty, I just wanna pick a proposal and move on.
I've said this many times before, if John had the proposal, I'd much rather deal here. They just came in, cause LG Wheel told me about a company that does them all over the country for them. They came in, and Dan came in, and then, now I get to hear all this background, I've actually got most of it from John, about him and Anthony. But Anthony's only a front man, cause he knows you guys, apparently, because my contact is a guy named Dan.
Are we putting a motion on the table?
Is the motion going to be to, we take bids 30 days from now, the next 28 days in the next meeting? In four weeks? Got it?
Yep, support.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed? All right, we'll take the bids in 28 days.
What do you want me to tell Benesch now? That they come back in a month, and it will be either awarded to John or them in a month, correct?
It's my intention.
I'd like somebody to make that motion, that it will be finished in a month. Three years is a long time.
Too long.
Anthony was involved for half of that time, cost.
Yeah.
That's John's fault. Just so you're aware, Anthony started this project.
Four weeks. So we're looking at our third, meeting of October 13th?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you gonna put that in your motion, though, that you will make a decision in a month? I appreciate that.
October 13th.
I agree. That'll be part of the motion, we'll make the decision.
Okay, so reword how you want the motion, then. And then we have to revote, cause we already...
All right, we'll vote to, take a, motion will be to take a bid, accept it, and move forward with a contract on October 13th.
Support.
Thank you.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed? We'll go to one F, trustee appointment, interviewing, selection process. Are we doing this the same way we did last time? Or are we doing it differently? Does anybody have a preference?
I think we should stay consistent in how we did it before. I mean, there's only five candidates this time. That's just my opinion, I think consistency is best, but...
You agree?
Absolutely.
Okay, we'll start with Roy Martin.
Do we want to separate them, like we did last time?
Yeah, we're gonna have everybody else have a seat that's a candidate, please have a seat in the back conference room.
So Frank, Sarah, Margie, Monica, if you guys wanna go to the conference room? It's up to you. Cause you'll be coming back in here, so.
Mr. Martin, we've got your resume, we heard you'll speak last time, I kinda remember your background. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Martin?
I do, I do. I mean, I can't stand up there, gotta ask him something. How long have you lived here?
Forty-eight years.
Roy, do, oh, go ahead. What's the biggest challenges you see in Clay Township?
Probably infrastructure, and that's probably the biggest thing.
Your turn.
Roy, do you wanna just sum up why you wanna join the board, in a couple sentences?
Well, obviously, I was born and raised here. Now that I pay attention to politics, as you get older, and, you know, I've been coming to every meeting and paying attention, I wanna be part of, you know, do what's best for the community. You know, being a lifelong resident, I feel that, you know, I feel that I know what the township needs.
Anybody else have any questions?
You got a pretty comprehensive resume here, Roy, I like it a lot. Very well put together.
I'll fix your skin, Roy. If it wasn't for the big money, right?
Yeah.
Just FYI, I figured it out, it's five cents a day.
Five cents a day?
Hopefully, that doesn't bump you into the next tax bracket.
You're on the DDA right now?
Correct.
Who's your president?
Mark Thompson.
What's his name?
Mark Thompson.
Yeah, okay.
It's hard to remember, it's been a long time since we had one of those. Last November was our last, last meeting.
Anybody else have any questions?
No, I don't.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Roy.
Next one I have is Ms. Pillarski, Pillarsky?
Monica?
Hello?
Hi.
So could you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure, my name's Monica Pillarsky, I got married on Saturday to Tyler Newman, I'm 31 years old, I was a resident of St. Clair County, I lived in Emmett, grew up in Yale, right, lived in Emmett, went to Yale High School, went to Grand Valley for college, couldn't get a job in Grand Rapids, so I moved back home, lived and bought my house in Roseville, and then Tyler and I started dating, got engaged, we bought a house on Col, or on Colony Drive in March, and we moved in about a month ago, so now I'm back in St. Clair County full-time.
Great.
What interests you about joining the township board?
So I was in a sorority in college, and I was on the board as well there, and I think being involved in your community, helping out, being involved is very important to do, especially as a tax-paying citizen, resident now of a county that seems to have a little bit of tension, drama, I don't wanna call it that, but that's what I'm gonna call it.
How long did you say you lived in Clay Township?
We bought the house in March, moved in full-time a month ago, cause we're renovating. So yes, I'm new, but like I said, I've been a resident of St. Clair County since I was four, I'm 31. Minus four years of college, but...
So it looks like you've been a legal assistant for quite some time.
Yeah, I went to school for a double degree in legal studies and political science.
When you bought the house in March, did you make that your permanent address then?
At that time, no, because I still own my house in Macomb County, and I didn't go through the selling process yet until we got married.
The reason I'm asking is because you have to be a resident for six...
I am a resident.
For six months before you can join the board.
Oh, that's, so, well, there we go, next year, I guess.
Yes, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. I didn't know, Tyler just saw the position because of the drama, and she was like, oh, you'd be great, I, you should apply, and I was like, sure, so.
I was looking for your current address, I couldn't find it, you were still up in LaPire.
No, I'm in Roseville, it was Roseville.
Oh, Roseville?
Yeah, yeah, I just changed it like last week, cause I didn't wanna, to be honest, mess up my homestead.
I did see Roseville.
Yeah, yeah, that's where my house is at, and I'm hopefully closing in two weeks on that.
All right. Does that apply to all the boards, Tanya?
I don't believe, I think just the actual township board.
Zoning is looking for people...
There is some openings on other boards, if you're interested.
Sure.
What do you do with horse racing industry?
Sure, so it is a very niche job, I am on the legal team of the anti-doping of the thoroughbred racehorses. So Kentucky Derby horses, they get drug tested, pre-racing and post-racing, if there's a positive, it comes through legal, and then we prosecute them.
So you do the investigation, end of it?
Investigation's different, so we send, they, they get notice out that they got a positive test, and then it goes through the legal process through us, and it is through the FTC, because it's gambling, so we are part of government in a sense as well.
Interesting.
Yeah, it's very, it is.
You come, is it, you do that a lot?
Um, I got the job two years ago, but I was at a law firm, doing insurance defense for a couple years before that, four years before that, so...
I'm talking about the horses being doped?
Um, honestly, yeah, mm-hmm, I mean, it is, like, there's more control, so more like, like, humankind of substances, but also like methamphetamine that are banned, that horses take, and people will do anything, like, they'll shove alcohol down a horse's throat to try to get an advantage. It's pretty sad, but...
Kind of drugs do they usually use in a horse?
Um, it depends, there's methamphetamine, there's funibetazone, there's acepromazine, it depends, it's controlled or banned, and how intense they're gonna be. And sometimes, it's not intentional, quote-unquote, because the horse needs omeprazole, and then they'll test, two days later, and the horse still has it in its system, so it's positive.
Wow, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So what about these other zoning that someone was mentioning, how do I...
We'll talk about that, I'll talk.
Probably see the clerk, she could fill you in, huh?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm gonna email you, I'm gonna call you tomorrow.
Okay, sounds good. I'm back to work after the wedding, so if I don't answer, leave me a voice when I'll get back to you.
Okay, not a problem.
Congratulations.
That was awfully quick to be, you just got married Saturday, you didn't take any time off to enjoy yourself?
I took Thursday, Friday, today off, we're going to collect next May, and just run into the house, so...
Very cool.
Do you have, George Burgess?
No, um, he, he asked to be removed from the list, I sent that in an email. Who'd you say?
Frank.
Frank? Try and talk into the microphone, Paul, if you could.
He tries, he's just gotta lean forward.
And I'm like, lean forward a little bit.
See her?
Good evening.
I know you applied once before, and you gave us a little background about yourself, do you wanna give us a little, a refresher memory?
Yes, sir, my name is Frank Benagi, I live at 8568 Stone Road. We purchased the property approximately five years ago, fell in love with Clay Township and the... We purchased the property approximately five years ago, fell in love with Clay Township and the surrounding area, and this is definitely where we want to spend the rest of our lives, and I wanted to be a little more involved in the community.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I do. You've lived here for five years?
Yes, ma'am.
What do you think is the greatest challenge in local government?
Unity. Believe everybody needs to get along a little bit better and try and work through, through the issues.
Any other questions?
You currently employed with who?
Wide Open West Cable TV.
Did you do any work around here recently?
Uh, no, sir. Well, I work from home, so I do work around here.
I guess it is. That's always good. Do you do any jobs with the tower over in Angling Road for telecommunication?
Uh, no, sir. We're not, we're not a contractor. We're like, we're like a Comcast.
Oh, okay.
Actually a competitor of Comcast.
All right, thank you, Ms. Benagi.
Thank you.
Thank you. Call Sarah Clements.
Sarah.
All right. Good evening.
I remember you from last time, Ms. Clements. Is there anything you'd like for us to refresh our memory with about you? You'd like us to know.
Sure. I have been a resident of Clay Township since 2021. I had lived in Elginak for 10 years prior, and I was born and raised in Marine City. So I've lived in the area most of my life, except for my college years. I am a social worker full-time. I have three kids in the school district, or I guess two in the school district. One's not in school yet. I feel that I'd be a good... I'm in a good position to be on the Board of Trustees because I have been actively involved in the local political scene for the last year. I think that the climate that we are in right now is really sad. I think that the township needs to be brought back together. There needs to be strong leadership and positive leadership to be able to bring the community back together. I think that the community needs to know that they can trust the Board of Trustees and the people that, you know, in the township. I don't know if you have other questions, but I know Mr. Cassidy said he remembers me, and I know most of you know me, so.
I do.
I remember you too.
I do, and some, you know, that probably... I speak a lot. I say how I feel. I have no problem doing that. But I like to think that I listen to what I hear people around me saying as well, and I just want what's best for the township.
I think you're always polite.
I try to be. Sometime, and I appreciate you saying that, because sometimes when you feel that people are not polite to you, it's not always the easiest to remain level-headed.
So you have an undergrad degree in behavioral sciences?
I do. Behavioral science and the track of social work. I've worked in child welfare for almost 20 years. So I know it's from a different seat, but I'm very familiar with the courtroom, as Mr. Cassidy is. I'm usually the one speaking to the judge in that situation. Fortunately, I'm not in court that much now as I'm in the supervisor position and not boots-on-the-ground worker in the city, so.
How many people do you supervise?
We are only allowed to supervise five people, but they each can have, well, I would like to say that they're allowed to service about 15 families at a time, and that's in a 30-day period, but I work in the busiest county, in the busiest building in the whole state, so.
So you're indirectly responsible for, what, 60 families?
No, uh, no, more than that. Yeah, more than that, and that's every 30 days. I mean, and that's on the low end.
That's a lot.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last time we had a list. We don't have a list this time.
I have, I did print a list, but we still have Margie Ferris.
Oh, I missed her. I'm sorry. Marge Ferris, yep.
Hello.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Margie.
Where are you?
I'm Margie Ferris. I live at 7204 Flamingo. I'm back here again to apply for the trustee position. I'm currently on the zoning and the planning commission right now. I belong to two boards. My, right now, I'm a business owner. I've always been a business owner for most of my career, and I'm in, also in real estate, so.
Busy girl.
Yeah. Trying to get busier, so. What else do you want to know? I've lived here most of my life. Our family goes back about 100 years. I'm gonna be celebrating my fourth class reunion this weekend. Graduated from Elginak, and I have a lot of family here, community ties. I've watched this community grow, and I love being a part of it. And I just want to be supportive and help, you know, make mindful decisions that are benefiting the community and the future of the community and the kids here, so.
Well, you sit next to me on the planning board.
Yeah.
So you've been very helpful in that.
Thank you.
And the zoning board as well.
Yeah. I like being a part of the community. It's been amazing, and I want to continue. And I will stay on other of the boards if you'll let me.
Excellent. Any other questions?
Is your business local, Margie?
Yes.
Yes?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I work from home, so the trucking company is pretty easy, and then I'm in real estate, so. You pretty much work for yourself.
How many trucks do you have?
Currently, two. We're downsizing a little bit, so we had five. Now we're down to two, so it's not too much.
Are they the larger trucks?
Gravel trains.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm. We have one for sale. Choking.
So you have to get a lot of permits going across roads and states?
We don't go across the state. We're local. We do gravel, sand, stone, yeah.
Have to stay on top of that for sure.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank you, Margie.
Thanks.
So last time we indicated if we could vote for as many people as you want, and if someone seems to come up ahead, we can, if people tie, we can discuss it.
Okay. Uh, we've got one person who got three votes, and that is Roy Martin. He got the most.
All right, do we have a motion?
I will make a motion to appoint Roy Martin as our new trustee for the Board of Trustees.
Support.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, both. Mr. Martin, congratulations. We'll have the clerks swear you in. Still here?
Yeah, he's in the back there.
Come on up, Mr. Martin.
Well, I did not bring the book with me.
You didn't?
No. If you want to come see me tomorrow.
You've sat over here before. Get over here. We'll swear you in at another time. We'll go to 1G, small diameter. Uh, I know the clerk wanted to add this. I'm not sure.
Oh, I just wanted to update everybody. I was just showing everybody the bill to try and keep everyone on the same page on where we're at with, because we have so many projects going on with PCE. So I just wanted to bring it up that this project, it did have a change order, which was within the contingency. And then we're going to be cutting a check for $107,494.88. I just wanted to put it on there just so you, just to give you guys an update on this one particular project, is all. That was already approved. I just want everybody to be in the loop.
Just an update?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go to 1H.
1H, Champion Ferry. We had some communication that we've received. I'd like to have John take the spearhead on that, please.
Oh, thanks, Mark.
Okay. I'm good at delegation.
So I was just curious, um, we received this letter, the entire board did, in fact, I guess it's, it went beyond the entire board, that it appears our township attorney, who was Mr. Addis at the time, was negotiating with Champion's Ferry to purchase the ferry for the township.
He wasn't negotiating a purchase. He was going to inquire as to their offer to sell it for 32 million and to find...
Through the township?
Well, see, that's what it was initially, but then later on it changed. It changed that anybody could buy it, and the township wasn't necessarily gonna buy it. If the township bought it, certainly wouldn't be with township funds. It would have been through MDOT. And so the question was, did they want to make disclosures knowing that MDOT would be interested in buying it, which they told me they were?
I mean, I'm out of the loop a lot on this board, I know, but I don't remember the board ever authorizing the township attorney to negotiate buying a ferry for the township.
He wasn't negotiating a purchase. He was getting the background information to determine whether or not they would, what they would do in terms of a sale.
So I have a question. Was the township...
He wasn't negotiating anything.
Was there a, was there a non-binding letter of intent and a draft listing of assets?
That did I receive.
No?
Was the township approached by Champion, or did somebody approach Champion about the sale?
Champion approached us. They sent us a letter. They said, we'll sell it to you for 32 million.
Oh, I just never saw that letter.
Well, it came to the whole board.
Well, it came to the whole board.
No, the previous one.
It was, it was in regards to the ferry ordinance that was coming up, again, that you took into your own hands without board approval to proceed with.
With what?
The ferry ordinance that was voted down.
It wasn't voted down?
It wasn't voted down by this board?
Wasn't voted on at all.
Okay, it wasn't voted on because it died.
That's right.
So again, we've got the township supervisor going rogue without the board's approval or authority to, to buy a ferry for the township.
Addison correct.
Okay.
All right.
Um, so some of these legal bills that were in question a meeting or two ago, were any of those legal bills in regards to this negotiation or communication with Champion's Auto Ferry?
Not that I know of.
Not that you know of?
Not that I know of.
So that's not a no? Remember I asked? I didn't know we had ferry issues, and you told me, well, we have lots of them. You had an opportunity to tell this board right then that there was communications between the township attorney and Champion's Auto Ferry to buy the ferry.
He wasn't negotiating a purchase yet, Mr. DeBoer.
It sure does sound like he was.
I would need that, but it wasn't.
It sure does sound like he was.
Well, you know what? He wasn't.
Well, was he trying to start a...
Negotiation, and he was not negotiating anything.
Well, this is that he was authorized to start a negotiation process.
Well, wait a minute.
So.
An inquiry is an inquiry. They, they inquired whether we would buy it for 32 million. I told Mr. Addis, see what their situation is. What are they willing to do?
Why, why do we care?
What about that?
Why do we care?
Well, we, we might care.
We...
How do we know?
But is it, well, I'll ask the question. Is it this board's intent to buy Champion's Auto Ferry?
Not mine.
Then why wouldn't we pay an attorney to investigate?
We didn't. We didn't.
So Addis did this out of the goodness of their heart?
Out of the good, just like Jake Bryson is getting this ferry out of the goodness of his heart for us. Exactly the same, yep.
If we have $32 million, there's a lot of other things that I'd like to see.
Nobody's looking to pay him 32 million for a ferry that might be worth 12, 15 million, right?
I don't care. I would have liked to have known about it right from the get-go that that's what was happening.
He sent us a letter, and I told Mr. Addis, inquire as to what they're willing to do.
Okay, so how difficult is that?
At that point, you should have gone to the board and said, I would like to see.
I don't need to do that. He could have come back and said, they're not willing to do anything. Why bother the board with it?
Okay, so this is, this, right, don't, don't bother us. Just handle it. So this is right from the Addis, this is right from the Addis letterhead, letter to Mr. Davis, Champion's attorney. "Thereafter, I was charged by the township supervisor to begin preliminary discussions with you, Mr. Davis, aimed at the possibility of a purchase by the township or others for the Champion's Auto Ferry."
Well, originally, his offer was to sell it to the township, and I told Mr. Addis that would never happen, and that if MDOT wanted to buy it and they could, he could simply inquire as to what they were willing to do. That's it.
So now we work on behalf of MDOT to, for their bit, for their, for their interest?
I'll help out MDOT every bit I can if, if it solves the problem we have.
Okay, and, and how come, how come?
And I've met with MDOT many times.
How come?
Fred, I'm sorry I didn't tell you.
Exactly. How come we don't know about these things? Everything's a secret here at Clay Township.
Oh, it's not.
Everything that goes on is a secret.
According to you.
Well. So it looks like Mr. Davis is asking for an answer back from, from the township if we wish to continue negotiation or discuss any of these matters. What's our intent?
What do you want to do?
What do I want to do?
Do I discuss it with them?
What do I want to do?
Yeah.
I don't want to buy a ferry, I'll tell you that.
Me either.
Okay, so why did even, why did we even go down this road?
Well, because MDOT.
Okay. My issue is, as usual, we never are communicated with. You know, we find out about OHM contracts three months later. We find out about ferry ordinances two months later. We find out about this four months later. It's, it's, it's the way it goes around here. It's ridiculous.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on Champion Auto Ferry? There'll be no further discussion. I guess we can go on to comments. Step around, Mark.
Oh, yeah, I'm in the back.
Okay.
Hello again. First, the next meeting's at the Harson's Island Lions Club, correct?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure, will the bar be open for everybody, or do we all have to join the Lions Club to walk around with open alcohol?
You know what, Mark?
And to slur our way through public comments?
Go ahead. Go ahead. I'll comment after you.
So can we confirm that there's no alcohol at public meetings? I'd like to know if that's confirmed. I don't remember John Hancock putting his beard on before he signed the Declaration of Independence.
He might have.
He might have. So anyways, that's, that's just something I was wondering, making sure there's no alcohol at a, at a public meeting. Number two is, Haida had a meeting on Saturday. They gave us a whopping three days' notice. The problem with that is that minimizes attendance. A public body should want as many public people there as possible. Also, as I've mentioned before, it should follow HISPRA meetings, because HISPRA meetings are very well-attended, and there's a HISPRA meeting this Saturday, so why the Haida Chair chooses when he does it is beyond me. And of course, there's no open public comments again. One of the board members tried to have public comments, but the Haida Chair said no. There's a problem when the Haida Chair doesn't want to hear from the public. I don't know how a public body operates without input from the public. That, I gave you a massive file that was a discussion between Jacob Bryson and the Haida Chair. If I would have submitted that as an engineering report, I would be fired immediately. When you get a file this thick, it has to have an executive summary and points that are made, so it was just, you can tell that it wasn't very professional. And lastly, the kicker was the, the Haida Chair threw a tantrum after one person asked about OHM, and then he talked about how people are nitpicking him. He is committing seven violations of two state laws. I don't know if that's considered nitpicking, or he's just not doing his job properly. So that brings me to my final point. At this point, the people have to take action after the multiple Haida State law violations. The state police have met with a few of us, nothing's happened. HISPRA doesn't want to do anything. They got as much testicular fortitude as this cabinet. MDOT doesn't want to do anything, and I just got an email back from the Michigan Attorney General's Office, they don't want to do anything. They would say, "Go to your local police. I'm not going to burden the Clay Township people with this, the police department. I have too much respect for them." So our only solution to this is the people, is we have to recall the supervisor, the treasurer, and then we have to petition the governor to remove the Haida Chair. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Anita Rezepa. You're all aware of that. I understand earlier in this meeting, there was an accusation made against me, and I wasn't present for that, because I had to step out and pick up my husband, and I came back. This was not my plan, but I feel like I was forced to do this, so I can defend myself. I said, I submitted a letter to the board earlier today, and what I was hoping for is that this could be discussed in a closed session, which is what I would like done moving forward, but at this time, I'd like to read my letter. "I submitted a formal complaint regarding treasurer's contact, conduct, and hostile work environment. Dear members of the Board of Trustees, I am writing to formally raise a complaint concerning the conduct of Treasurer Jerry Golka, which I believe has contributed to the creation of a hostile work environment. Since March 10, 2025, and even more so over the past two months, I have witnessed and experienced instances, instances of intimidation, disrespectful communication, and actions that undermine a respectful and professional workplace. Despite efforts to address these concerns informally, the situation has not improved and has instead created an atmosphere of stress and disruption. This matter, this matter not only impacts the well-being and productivity, productivity of myself and others, but also risks eroding confidence in the leadership of his department. It is my belief that such behavior is inconsistent with the values and standards expected of those in leadership roles. Accordingly, I respectfully request that the Board of Trustees initiate a fair and thorough investigation into this matter, ensuring that appropriate and corrective measures are taken. My hope is that the board will address the situation promptly and take steps to restore a safe and professional working environment. Please confirm the receipt of this letter and provide information regarding the process and timeline for the board's review. Thank you for your attention to this serious matter. I remain committed to the success of this organization and trust that the board will handle this issue with the care and diligence it requires. Sincerely, Anita Rezepa. I submitted a very professional letter and asked that the board handle it professionally, and again, I would like for the board to handle it in a closed session, as that I did not want this to be done publicly, but again, I understand that this was done when I was not present and just felt that I needed to defend myself. Thank you."
There's no further public comment?
My name is Joe Garten. I'm at 2212 Fruit Street. Real men look at men when they're talking to them, because cowards sit there and look at their watch while they're counting down time. I would like to know, how do you think it's, how do you find it acceptable to not allow me to speak my three minutes in public comments? How? Why am I not allowed to talk? Anyone else can have talked about anything they want to, but me. Why is that? Seems like you're singling me out, huh? For what? Why? I'm not a female. You can talk to me however any way you want to, like you guys talk to these females. It's obvious, behind closed doors, online. You guys are cowards. You sit up there, and you're a coward. That is all you are. And guess what? I can legally sit up here for three minutes and tell you how big of a coward you are, because that is all you are, Mr. Cassidy, is a big coward. You can't run anything, just like your buddy Jerry Golka. He can't run anything.
You're here to talk about-
I am here to talk about whatever I want to talk about, Cassidy.
You're talking about township business.
I don't care what you say, I'm against it, Cassidy.
Not to attack people.
I'm not attacking anybody. I am talking about what I want to talk about.
I'm asking you to re, to keep your comments about township business.
You can ask me to do what you want. Now you can shut up, and I'll take my three minutes. I can sit up here and do a dance.
I'm going to ask you to sit down, sir.
You can ask me to do whatever you want. You're not in charge of my three minutes. This is my three minutes, Wes. I will stand here and look at you for three minutes. How about that?
Please sit down. That, that's fine.
How about that? No, you're not in charge of nobody. You're a clown. You are an absolute clown and a disgrace to the government.
You're not here to throw impressions at me.
A clown. That is what you are. You're an absolute clown, and you're a disgrace to the government.
I'm going to ask you to sit down.
Thank you very much. You're resigned.
Thank you for your kind remarks.
So I hope that Ms. Rose takes her board comment time to read the letter. We'd all love to hear that. And I do want to give a shout out to Bev Rose. In her short time on the board, she has already made a tremendous positive impression as a very definition of what an effective board member should be. Bev is thoughtful, attentive, and truly engaged. She does her homework, asks the right questions, and seeks out perspectives that matter most. I was very impressed that she took it upon herself to meet directly with the owner of Champion Ferry and to speak with island residents to better understand their views and concerns, an approach that shows real initiative and genuine care for the people she represents. You can see her passion shine when it comes to supporting our local police and firefighters, and it's clear that she has their backs, just as we all should. Ms. Rose is the epitome of what dedication, leadership, and service to our communities should look like. So on another note, we are at a crossroad. The first 15 minutes of the special August 18th board meeting was anything but special, but it was effective. It was effective by showing that when two problem children on the board leave the room, we can effectively run a meeting as it should be run peacefully and professionally. I had forgotten what it was like not to have turmoil and tension in this room. Clay Township cannot afford three more years of elected officials who put their own agenda above our community interests. Cassidy has already shown us that backroom deals are how he likes to operate. Making decisions without accountability is his specialty. The OHM contract fiasco pales next to finding out that he's looking to make Clay Township, the owner of a ferry department, a company, without even letting his fellow board members in on the secret. His backroom decisions come with consequences that could cost us for years. It looks like Cassidy was Haida's Plan B, but for us, it's time for Plan C, that's Citizens for Recall. This isn't just about politics, it's about protecting our township, our tax dollars, and our right to transparent, responsible government. But here's the truth. A recall campaign isn't easy. We only get one shot. That's why it will take a united front, neighbors standing together, determined to restore trust and integrity to Clay Township. If we prepare, organize, and act, we can succeed, sending a clear message that Clay Township belongs to its citizens, not to politicians making secret deals. And when we do, we'll proudly say, "Hop along, Cassidy."
Any further comments? All right, we'll go to board member comments. Mr. DeBoyer?
I'd like to ask you, Mr. Supervisor, you know, you read a statement at your supervisor's report, or maybe it was at the beginning of the meeting, I forget, but about this hostile work situation. Who'd you talk to before you made that decision?
You can make your comment.
Did you talk to, did you talk to Ms. Rezepa?
This is not an inquiry.
Did you talk to Ms. Rezepa?
You're out of order. You're only allowed to make comments.
You know what? Your out of order doesn't work with me, okay?
You can talk to me outside. I'll be happy to talk to you.
I will. I am. Everything's secret with you, isn't it? Everything's secret with you, outside. Can I record the conversation?
You can bring everybody with you if you wish. You can even bring your big brother.
You know what? My what?
Your big brother.
My big brother. What does that mean?
You can bring your big brother.
I don't get, is there any meaning to that, or is that all of your stupid comments?
You're very kind, Mr. DeBoyer.
What is, and you are, what are you talking about, my big brother? What is that? First, it's a poop comment, then it's a big brother?
You got a chance to talk.
You're unbelievable. You know that? You're unbelievable. So I'm going to assume that you didn't talk to Ms. Rezepa, or anybody that witnessed the situation, and I would say that there needs to be an investigation. We need to research the whole thing before you come out with statements claiming that it's this, this way, and nobody knows both sides, and nobody knows the facts. So I think that we should bring that back in our next meeting. We should decide how we want to investigate this, and we should investigate the situation and bring it back to the board, and the chips fall where they may. Secondly, second off, I believe we have two department head contracts that are, are expired, actually, one for maybe quite some time. I was just curious what the status of those are.
Well, I asked them both to bring forth a contract that they would like to us to consider, and I haven't received.
So when was that communication? How recent was that?
About a month or so ago.
A month ago, you communicated, you communicated to our water department head and our fire chief that you want them-
The fire chief I did. I didn't with-
Well, I just, I said two, and you told me-
I assume Mr. Serdy's been talking about-
See how the facts are elusive? I got to clarify everything, and then it comes out at what I ask you, right?
Go ahead.
Okay, so, so-
Got your comments.
No, I'm not done yet. I'm not done yet. Okay? I'll go all night.
Rory, you want to come down here?
So you sure you're up for this, buddy?
Five cents a day, man.
So, sorry, so Mr. Serdy, there's been no communication on his contract?
It's your time for comment.
Okay, so we'll take that as a no. Thanks for your responsible supervisor skills. I'll just say, welcome to Roy, and good luck, because this is a, this is a circus. That's all I got.
Mark, do you have anything?
Just a comment on workplace harassment. I think there's a state law that covers that, just to make that clear. Planning Commission on the, on Wednesday has been canceled, and I really can't talk on anything else. Thank you.
Ms. Rose?
Oh, yes. Thank you for your nice comments. I have always taken all of my jobs seriously, including this one. Amber, we're going to miss you, but she's got a great opportunity, so she's going. Third, how can you sit next to a person and watch his anger and his temper and then not see exactly what's happening in your office? You defended somebody, everybody's seen the temper. You think that doesn't happen? That, that to me was ridiculous. Nothing further.
Ms. Holman?
Okay. So I would like to start with, as Township Board members of trustees, we have a policy book, and that policy book that we have to follow is an ethics section that is about this thick. What I'm going to read to you guys right now as part of that. Members of the Township Board shall intervene when actions of elected and appointed officials are brought to their attention and appear to be in violation of the code of, of the code of the ethical conduct. A board official who is made aware of the alleged violation shall report the complaint to the supervisor and/or the clerk. I was in attendance when this situation happened the other day that the supervisor decided to speak about today, and I did exactly that. And for him to say that I got loud is really uncalled for, because the only reason I had to step in was to do my duty as a trustee and protect the employees that we employ here at the township. And then on another note, besides that, if anybody is willing to record our meeting on Harson's Island next, our next board meeting, we are definitely looking for someone to record. If we don't have somebody to record the meeting, it's not going to be recorded, and by law, we don't have to record. So shoot me an email, let me know if anybody is interested. And we're really going to miss Amber. She was a great asset, but she does have a great opportunity. And congratulations, Roy. That's all I have to say.
Mark, I agree with you. I got your email. When you wrote about this gentleman, you called him a drunken dredge, and I didn't send you back an email. I know that, but it was pretty, it was pretty low-class what that man did. He wanted to speak, he was drunk. I'm on Harson's Island, and I'm going to take and tell him he can't take the mic? What do you think everybody would have done? They would have done like him. First Amendment, First Amendment. I agree. He was a poor, poor example of our community, and it's unfortunate. Other than that, I have nothing further. We'll go to the next meeting on Harson's Island, August 22nd. Motion to adjourn?
August?
August.
September. Typo. That was me.
What's that right here?
No, it does say August. There was the typo. That's on me, ladies and gentlemen. It is September 22nd.
August sounded better.
Summer wouldn't be over, right?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.